Good evening. Welcome to the City Council meeting for the City of Gehanna on December 1st, 2025. If you would please join me for the invocation and pledge of allegiance led by Vice President Trenton Weaver.
Thank you. As we gather, let us come together with a spirit of communal warmth and shared purpose. Let us reflect on the quiet potential for the rest and growth this season brings, and commit to acts of kindness that sustain us through the cold. May we find strength in our unity and work together to support one another, creating a bright and hopeful community for all. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Mr. Van Meter, would you please call the roll?
Bowers.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
McGregor.
Here.
Padova.
Here.
Renner.
Here.
Schnitzer.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Van Meter. Are there any additions or corrections to this evening's agenda? All right, we'll move on to Section C hearing. Mr. Van Meter, do we have any speaker slips this evening?
None this evening.
All right, thank you. Our next item on this evening's agenda is our public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2026 budget. Pursuant to council rules, we will open this hearing, and the administration is welcome to make a brief presentation, although I believe that that will be deferred tonight, given the extensive conversation that we've already had. And then, public comment will be open for three minutes allowed per speaker. Speakers who wish to be heard on this topic must complete a speaker slip and come to the podium when called stating their name and address for the record. This evening's topic, as mentioned, is Ordinance 49-2025, an ordinance adopting appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Gehanna during the fiscal year 2026. With that, we'll open the public hearing. And hearing none who wish to be heard on this item, we will go ahead and close the public hearing. Moving on to Section E, the consent agenda. We have one item on the consent agenda that requires a second reading. Mr. Van Meter, would you please read Ordinance 51 into the record?
Ordinance 0051-2025, an ordinance to establish utility rates and amend related provisions of Part 9, Title III, Public Utilities of the Gehanna Codified Ordinances.
Thank you, Mr. Van Meter. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as published?
So moved.
A first by Mr. Renner?
Second.
A second by Mr. Weaver? Any discussion? All right, hearing none. Mr. Van Meter, would you please call the roll?
Renner?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
McGregor?
Yes.
Padova?
Yes.
Schnitzer?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes. Motion carries and the items on the consent agenda are adopted. Section F, Resolutions. We have one item this evening, Resolution 56-2025, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Community Improvement Corporation of Gehanna for a term beginning January 1, 2026, through December 1, 2026, to promote and encourage economic activity for the city. Before I ask for a first, I'll note that this was originally introduced as an ordinance and now is appearing before you as a resolution, and a red line agreement has been attached to the Legisstar file. With that, is there a first to adopt Resolution 56?
So moved.
A first by Mr. Renner?
Second.
And a second by Ms. Padova? Any discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Weaver.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a quick clarifying question, just to ensure that the city attorney has reviewed the red line from last week's committee meeting.
Yes, I have, and I approve.
Great. I'm good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. Mr. Van Meter, would you please call the roll?
Renner?
Yes.
Padova?
Yes.
McGregor?
Yes.
Schnitzer?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Motion carries and Resolution 56-2025 is approved. Section G, ordinances for introduction and first reading. Mr. Van Meter, would you please read ordinances 49 and 53 identified on this section?
Ordinance 0049-2025, an ordinance adopting appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Gehanna during the fiscal year 2026. Ordinance 0053-2025, an ordinance determining the necessity of and authorizing the issuance and sale of economic development improvement and refunding revenue bonds, Series 2025, the Columbus Academy Project of the City of Gehanna, Ohio, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $15 million, authorizing the execution and delivery of a loan agreement, an assignment of loan agreement, a bond purchase agreement, a tax exemption certificate and agreement, and other documents in connection with the issuance of the bonds and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Van Meter. These items will come on for second reading and adoption on the December 15th agenda. Section H, ordinances for introduction, waiver, and adoption. Mr. Van Meter, would you please read Ordinance 52 into the record?
Ordinance 0052-2025, an ordinance waiving the formal bidding requirements pursuant to Gehanna Code, Section 133.02(c)(6), authorizing the mayor to enter into contract with Tyveco, Inc. for the replacement of the Big Walnut Trail bridge decking, and waiving second reading.
Thank you, Mr. Van Meter. Before we proceed, I will note also that this appeared before us at committee without the identified selection of contractor. The ordinance has been updated to reflect the contractor recommended by the administration. I first would like to ask for a motion to suspend council rules and waive second reading pursuant to the request from the administration. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I have a first by Mr. Renner?
Second.
And a second by Ms. Jones? Any discussion? Mr. Van Meter, would you please call the roll on the motion to waive second reading?
Renner?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Padova?
Yes.
Schnitzer?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGregor?
Yes.
Motion carries, and we will proceed to vote on Ordinance 52. Is there a motion to adopt Ordinance 52-2025?
So moved.
A first by Mr. Renner?
Second.
A second by Ms. Padova? Any discussion on this item? All right, Mr. Van Meter, would you please call the roll?
Renner?
Yes.
Padova?
Yes.
Schnitzer?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
McGregor?
Yes.
Motion carries and Ordinance 52-2025 is adopted. Next, Section I, Correspondence and Actions. Mr. Van Meter, do you have anything for us this evening?
Nothing this evening.
All right, under council items, we have two notices. I've included a Columbia Gas of Ohio notice that was received on 11/24 regarding rates for infrastructure replacement program rider. Would encourage folks to take a look at that for Columbia Gas increasing their rates. And also, there is an item included on here, your latest bimonthly city council newsletter. Just a reminder that if folks are interested, they can sign up to receive the city council newsletter through the gehanna.gov website. Section J, Representatives. We'll start with the Community Improvement Corporation appointees, Mr. Renner and Ms. Padova. Yes, Ms. Padova?
I'll take this one. We met last month, oh gosh, on the 18th of November, and the meeting was called to order at 8:00 a.m. by Collins. The minutes were unanimously approved. Monthly financials were presented and approved by the board. Director Gottke presented two governance items, the first being the 2026 contract with the city, and the second was an RFP for the CIC strategic plan that we will be doing in 2026. Director Gottke also presented two technology topics. First was the agreement with a cloud storage provider, and second was professionalizing the CIC emails. The board went into executive session at 8:36 a.m. and exited executive session at 8:57 and adjourned the meeting at 9:04. Our next CIC meeting will be on December 16th at 7:30 a.m. at the Senior Center, and that one is one of the two meetings of the year that all of council is invited to come and join us. So again, that's December 16th at 7:30 a.m. at the Senior Center, and I believe everybody should have received an email. I believe that came from the mayor to add that to your calendar as well.
Thank you, Ms. Padova. Anything to add, Mr. Renner?
No.
All right, great, thank you. Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission appointee, Mr. Weaver.
Thank you, Madam President. The commission's next meeting will be on December the 11th. A couple items from the report, which first of all, thanks as always to council office for their assistance in preparation of the report. MORPC is seeking assistance in developing the regional cycling guide. Central Ohio Greenways are updating the regional bikeways map and creating a new 15-county cycling guide. More information and the opportunity to provide public input is available at the link in the report. MORPC's public participation plan is open for public comment. You are invited to share your thoughts on transportation planning. Comments may be submitted by email to info@morpse.org or in writing to MORPC by 5:00 this coming Monday. You can learn more about public participation opportunities at the link provided. Lastly, an event that may be of particular interest. MORPC has been hosting a series of educational workshops throughout the year. This last one, on December 17th, is the Regional Economic Development Academy, Capstone, which will discuss the pros and cons of the various economic development tools available to local governments in Ohio, including TIPS, CRAs, enterprise zones, JEDs, new community authorities, and how those tools can be leveraged by local governments. And that will be it for my MORPC report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Back to Councilwoman Padova for Convention and Visitors Bureau report.
Thank you. This Saturday, December 6th, is the Santa Race 5K and the Little Reindeer Dash. I believe that all of the slots are full, the signups full for that. But just a reminder that that is at Academy Park this year rather than Creekside. Also, very exciting, today is December 1st, and I'm sure everybody is waiting for the Santa hotline number. Visit Gehanna is doing the Call the Santa Hotline again, where you can call a number and hear greeting from the North Pole directly. That is brought to you by Visit Gehanna and FutureCom Technologies. And that number is 614-478-1061. So if you have little ones, I highly recommend you do that. It's a good bribe for bedtime. That's all for me.
Thank you. Councilwoman Jones, school board.
Yeah, so just an update of the meetings coming up this month. So the board workshop is this Thursday, 6:30, Clark Hall. On the 16th is the Finance and Facilities Committee meeting, and then 12/18 regular board meeting. All three of those are 6:30 at Clark Hall. You've also heard me speak about save the date for tours of the old and new high school and ribbon-cutting ceremony. So there are now additional details around that. The ceremony begins at 10:00 a.m. On January 10th, doors open at 9:30. There is a host of information, including parking. It suggests that folks park by Clark Hall and shuttle over. Directions on tour times, all of that is now listed on the homepage of the district's website. You can click a link there and get a full webpage of all of the details. Also, anyone living within the district boundaries should have also received or will soon a postcard with additional details about the high school opening. And that is January 10th as in next month. I've shared that with a few residents, and folks are finding it hard to believe that folks will really move into the school in a matter of like eight weeks. So yes, they will be moving in January 10th. The community can see the building along with, well, the students will move in right after Christmas break. I believe that's all I have for this evening, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones. Let's see, official reports, Mayor Jadwin.
Thank you very much. Well, we're excited to share that the Gehanna Mountain Bike Trail at Academy Park recently won second place in the Ohio Parks and Recreation Association Awards of Excellence. It was for the category of capital improvement projects under $500,000. I think this is what, three years in a row, Steph? Your team has won some kind of award from Oprah. It's really incredible. As we all know, the nearly three-mile trail is designed for riders of all skill levels, offers a fun new outdoor adventure. You can ride your bike, you could just walk it. And even though it might be really cold, it might be really pretty tomorrow in the snow. So what began really as a grassroots idea from some passionate residents grew into what is truly a wonderful community collaboration. So congratulations, Director Farrell, to you and your team, to the four residents who really had that concept that led to the vision for the project, and the multiple partners who helped to bring that project to reality. It's a tremendous asset to our community and well-deserving of the recognition it's receiving. Congratulations. Speaking of snow, we are forecast to experience our first winter storm tonight. Our public service crew has been dealing with a water main break on the west side since about 9:30 this morning. It was not related to any ongoing construction projects. It was down in the area, I believe, of South Stigler and West Johnstown Road. That has been repaired. But in addition to the team devoting their time to that, part of the team was also out preparing our roadways and treating them in anticipation of the snow that's forecast to come overnight. So they will be out round the clock, making sure that they are keeping our roads as clear and safe as possible for our residents for in the morning as they go to their jobs and commute. There are a few reminders, we've posted those on our social media page, but just a reminder to some of our residents to please move your parked vehicles off the street so that the plows can come through. When you sit in that, one of those large plows and you see what their vantage point is out that front window, they can't see your cars. They're busy plowing snow. So it really helps them to make sure that they can clear as much snow as possible if you could just move those vehicles off temporarily. And then, standard things, clear the snow and ice from your vehicles before you head out, and monitor and follow weather alerts and traffic advisories. We'll continue to post updates. Any closures that might be necessary, we'll share those on our Facebook pages in the morning. So please keep an eye on those social media pages. Throughout 2025, we have worked to focus on mental health and sharing resources with our community to deal with that issue. Next Monday, December 8th, we will once again hold our second Mental Health Resource Event to provide an opportunity for our residents to learn more about the resources that are available. We have more than a dozen providers that will be on hand for that event for informal conversations, to answer questions, or just simply share information. Many thanks to our community liaison officers, Blair Thomas and Ann Joden, for organizing another great event and getting these providers together. Again, it is Monday, a week from today, December 8th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Gehanna Library here in town. More details can be found at gehanna.gov and on our social media pages. And I would invite you and encourage you to help share information about that. This is a time of year when our Division of Police really sees an uptick in calls for mental health support. Holidays are a joyful time for many, but for some, they're not. And it could be a terribly painful time for some folks. So please keep an eye on your friends, your neighbors, strangers, but just reach out if you know somebody who seems to really be struggling and help share information about this event so that we can help as many people as possible. And then, just finally, a reminder, as fall decorations come down and holiday decorations are going up, you might be looking to get rid of those pumpkins and gourds that are still around your house. I have a Christmas wreath on my front door sitting by my pumpkins. So I'm kind of still in that transition between holidays. So just a reminder that we are again offering pumpkin composting this year, providing an easy, clean, and sustainable way to get rid of those pumpkins and gourds. It is located at the Lower McCorkle Park. It has been there for about a month, but it will be there till next Tuesday, December 9th. So please feel free to drop those off there. I know a lot of people like to put them in their yards. That tends to draw critters, so that's all I'm going to say there. So you can feed the wildlife, but just know what you're getting in that, that's a bargain. So again, pumpkin composting through next Tuesday, December 9th at Lower McCorkle. And that's all I have. Thank you.
City Attorney Tamel Arison.
Thank you. As just a brief update, the Taglia matter, which was the trip and fall at Academy Park, has been appealed. That was dismissed on a motion for summary judgment by the city favorable to the city. And the appeal is now pending, and I will keep you apprised of any updates there. In other news, the Cincinnati taxpayer litigation case that we had authorized that we sign on to an amicus brief to decline jurisdiction. So the court actually ultimately dismissed this case as moot as the filing party had failed to ask to stay execution while pending the appeal. And so, construction actually began on the building that was being litigated about. So that rendered the entire thing moot because they did not follow the procedural posture to preserve their claim. So the Supreme Court has dismissed that case, and so that is favorable to our position in support of Cincinnati. That is all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney Tamel Arison. All right, on to council comment then. Councilwoman McGregor.
Thank you. This coming Saturday, we have, the historical site has the Victorian Christmas from 12:00 to 3:00. Santa will be in the log house with a fire. Crafts will be in the meeting room of the Clark House. Wassel and gingerbread cookies will be in the bed and breakfast. And the cookies will be delicious because I made four batches, and I will make 20 dozen this week for that. So we will have plenty of gingerbread cookies. The one thing I want to say about the pumpkins and the critters, one year we had our pumpkin, and we live along a small creek, which creeks are like highways for animals. So we split it open and sat it there and put our trail cam up. And over a couple of weeks, we had possums, squirrels, birds, coyote, deer, and raccoon walking along there. So it was pretty interesting to see the critters that we have in our suburb. So, and that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman McGregor. All right, Councilwoman Jones.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman Padova?
Thank you. I just wanted to give a shout out to all of the staff and especially the Parks Department for all of their work on the Holiday Lights Festival and also everyone in the community who had booths and the vendors that were set up there. It was so crowded, there were so many people there, coming and taking advantage of the great festival that we offer. So thank you for all of the hard work that you guys do on that. Also, this Friday, there is a snowball event at the Gehanna Library. And I just looked this up, and now I think I have the wrong date pulled up. But it is this Friday, the 5th, let me look at my phone, from 6:30 to 8:30. We went last year, and it was great. They had Santa there and all kinds of different events. So highly recommend checking that out this week.
Thank you, Councilwoman Padova. Councilman Renner?
I don't have anything this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Renner. Mr. Schnitzer?
Nothing to add, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schnitzer. Mr. Weaver?
Nothing this evening, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple items that I wanted to share this evening. First, I wanted to reflect that today, December 1st, is World AIDS Day. It's recognized annually and reminds us that progress is possible when we act with compassion, clarity, and collective purpose. Today, on World AIDS Day, we honor lives lost, stand with those who are living with HIV, and recommit ourselves to expanding access to care, eliminating stigma, and advancing the science and policies that save lives. While our work is definitely not finished, it is not finished until we eliminate new transmission, which is possible. Together, we can move forward to a future where every person can live with dignity, health, and hope. So I would encourage folks to take a look at the resources that are available through Franklin County Public Health, Columbus Public Health, and clinics like Equitas so that people can be aware of their status and be aware of all the treatment options that are out there to ensure that an HIV diagnosis is not a death sentence. Second, I wanted to take a moment of privilege and recognize City of Cleveland Councilwoman Rebecca Mauer, whose final council meeting is today. Unfortunately, Councilwoman Mauer's district was redrawn, pitting her against another incumbent. And unfortunately, she will not be continuing forward in her service role. Specifically, I want to recognize Councilwoman Mauer because she has absolutely been an example to me of how to engage with residents in an incredibly in-depth and meaningful way. She has represented her ward with incredible esteem and is highly communicative and fights to ensure that her residents are very well-represented in the city. So congratulations to Councilwoman Mauer on an incredibly effective term. I also want to extend my congratulations to Gehanna Lincoln High School Girls Cross Country Coach, Ryan Callahan. Mr. Callahan, Coach Callahan, was recognized as the Columbus Dispatch Metro Coach of the Year. So huge congratulations to him, especially on the big heels win of our Gehanna Lincoln Girls Cross Country's state championship. So excellent job to that entire, to that entire team. And finally, I want to close. Some of you may have seen this, it was trending on social media recently, but a George Bernard Shaw quote is, I think, very apt for right now. "This is the true joy in life, being used for a purpose recognized by yourself as a mighty one. Being a force of nature instead of a feverish, selfish little clod of ailments and grievances, complaining that the world will not devote itself to making you happy. I am of the opinion that my life belongs to the whole community, and as long as I live, it is my privilege to do for it what I can. I want to be thoroughly used up when I die, for the harder I work, the more I live. I rejoice in life for its own sake. Life is no brief candle to me. It is a sort of splendid torch, which I have got hold of for the moment, and I want to make burn as brightly as possible before handing it on to future generations." So I hope that as we wrap up this final month of 2025, it's my privilege to continue to serve with folks who I know share this commitment to community and ensuring that the torch is passed on after we are through with it. So with that, we will adjourn our meeting for December 1st. Thank you.
You did it by 7:30.
All right, I'd like to go ahead and call to order our Finance Committee meeting for Monday, December 1st. Colleagues, I received no questions to pass on to the administration. Does anybody have any general questions about the budget?
Maybe one quick question, just because it... Were you going to like follow up with anything?
I was, but please, the floor is yours.
There was an NLC report that was pushed out by OML recently that indicated that spending nationwide is up among municipalities. And this is probably located in the budget book, but Director Burry, are you able to tell us where we fall in that percentage? And I recognize that a good deal of that has to do with inflation and things like that.
So not off the top of my head, I do not have the percentage change from last year to this year. But in all of those tables that are laid throughout the book, you could see the increases throughout. We did have that slight anomaly because of the $5 million to the CIC. So ours looks a little bit skewed. But once you back out that one-time expenditure, you could see that we are on that same trajectory of increasing expenses from one year to the next.
Okay. Thank you, Director Burry.
Okay. Okay, I do have a general question, Director Burry. When looking at the budget and from 2025 to the proposed 2026, are there things in '25 that are a carryover into '26, or are there things that we wanted to do in '25, but we just didn't get to them, and there are in '26?
Majority of that falls in the capital improvement category, which are intended to be multi-year. If anything that was not ready to be worked on this year would basically be returned. They have to go through the entire procurement process before they could actually encumber those dollars. So if they haven't moved forward at this point, chances are those appropriations will be returned, and then will be asked for at a later time.
Okay, and thank you for the reminder about the capital improvement process. Okay, are there any other questions? So I wanted to go back a little bit down memory lane. It seems like, you know, we've been talking about the budget for a long time. If you remember, October 20th, we actually started talking about the CIP, and we had the second reading of that, and we passed it. And I really want to start there because the CIP and the Gehanna Strategic Plan are the, the two guardrails for our '26 budget. But so park that in your head. October 22nd, we then represented the all-fund summary. And then every Monday since then, we have had discussions from the departments and, you know, some discussions by council back, you know, the, by and large, they were clarity type of questions. And then that brings us all the way through to today. And so I just wanted to, you know, jot everybody's, or jog everybody's memory about this. This has been a very long process. This has been a long process for our constituents, and I know that we actually have yet another meeting this year, to actually, two more meetings to go through, but this is a real hearty budget, and it's important. And $114 million budget, when you add up the general fund and the proprietary funds and the enterprise fund, and then the guardrails for our Gehanna, you know, strategic plan and plus the CIP. There's a lot going on for our constituents. Any comments or questions about that?
I'll just reflect that I think that this budget process has been smooth this year, due in large part, I think, to some, a lot of the work that you three in particular, Senior Director Schultz, Wilmer, Director Burry, have put in over the last several years, actually. I think the, the progress that we've made on the CIP, the staffing study, and other forecasting, I think, has, has allowed us to contextualize the budget in this year much better than perhaps in the past. So, and it combined with previewing, I think, some of the staffing changes throughout the year and some updates, I think overall, it's really helped us come into this process more informed than perhaps we were in the past. So thank you.
If I could, I appreciate your comments. We've been working very hard as a team, trying to understand the best way to present the information for all of council. It's a lot of information to digest, really in what is relatively a short period of time. So appreciate your feedback, and we'll continue to work with council to find a process that works best as we continue to identify opportunities to improve our internal operations as well. But how we best convey that information to all of you and our residents in an easy-to-understand, comprehensive, and comprehensible manner remains a priority for us, so thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Councilwoman Bowers, I really do believe that your comments actually put a tight bow around this because we actually have a very good document for our constituents, and so hats off to everybody that's put a mammoth amount of work into it. As I've said before, and I'll say it again tonight, the, the real heart and soul of our budget is actually in the all-fund summary. And so if you, for anybody watching, for anybody looking at this, if you really want to understand our budget, it's in the all-funds, and it's in the proposed 2026. It is pages 23 through 39, and everything is there, and then the subsequent pages after that start talking about the nitty-gritty details and the nuances. One more time, any questions or comments? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.